September 1st, 2021, meeting of the Falls Church Planning Commission. Before I read the COVID notice on the space of the baseball world.
Yes, Chair Krasner.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Ms. Peats will be absent tonight. Mr. Quintas. Ms. Weiss.
Here.
Ms. Colmott.
Here.
And Mr. Hyra is coming, but he's coming late.
Okay. Now that critical mass, before we get started, I will read the required notice. Meeting for which this agenda has been posted will be held for someone to comply with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2, 3708.2, and state and local legislation adopting to allow continued government operation during the COVID-19 declared emergency. All participating members of the planning commission will be present at this meeting through electronic meets, and all members of the public will review the meeting at It will be on Falls Church City Television, which you can view on Cox Channel 11, RCN Channel 2, and Verizon FiOS Channel 35. Public comments are accepted virtually. Anyone who signed up to speak will do so via the meeting video platform. In order to speak at it, speak on an item by general public comment, you need to complete a speaker form at www.ballschurchba.gov-publiccomment. You will need to do that before noon on the day of the meeting, and following submission of that form, you will receive, excuse me, email instructions to join the virtual planning commission meeting. Written comments that are sent in advance of the meeting are accepted at our website, which is plan@ballschurchba.gov. Those are accepted until noon on the day of the meeting and are sent to the planning commission summarized here at the meeting. So with that, we'll go ahead and we'll look to adopt our agenda. Again, it's a relatively light agenda, maybe it's good for our first meeting back after a bit of an August break. And so I did discuss this with Paul earlier in August. There haven't been any changes to our speaker series, so if there are no other comments or concerns with the agenda as printed, I'm looking for a motion to adopt it.
So.
So motion. Second, Mr. Stevens, and in the discussion, if not, we'll call the Ms. Peats.
Chair Krasner.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens. Mr. Quintas.
Yes.
Ms. Weiss.
Yes.
Ms. Colmott.
Yes.
Mr. Hyra. All right.
Okay. Great. So we will proceed as agenda was published, which brings us to our speaker series. I think I see some other folks logged in, and I assume they're part of the speaker series. Although Ms. Winquist is listed as the headliner, but we may have some other people here as well. And I appreciate, I know this bounced around a couple times on our agenda, so I appreciate their flexibility, we were able to have them here tonight. I think out of our agenda, we have the presentation, and stormwater task force brief documents are attached to the agenda. But I guess with that, I will turn it over to our speakers, to, I guess, Ms. Winquist.
So, should I, Emily, should I jump in?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
That looks good. Okay, so we've got the slides here. So thanks, everyone. My name again is Eileen Winquist. I work for Arlington County Environmental Services Department, and I do communications for our stormwater management and watershed management programs. So all kind of combination with our stream projects and also our sewer and storm sewer infrastructure projects. So I have a short slide presentation, and then we can, if there are any questions. And then I can also, I did see the questions earlier from one of the members, but I can send a couple links, because some of our webpages have a little bit more detail on some of the topics if you want to kind of dive in a little bit more. So you can do the next slide. So I don't know in details as much in Falls Church, but in Arlington County, in the recent three to four years, we have been experiencing more significant and intense flooding issues. And this slide kind of lays out some of the contributing factors to that. And Arlington, and similar to Falls Church, you know, are older communities, and most of Arlington's development was very, development was very rapid, was unplanned, and at that time, there were no regulations for stormwater management, or to protect streams, or, you know, maintain RPAs, any of that kind of regulatory requirements. So initially, during Arlington's very fast development, the streams were used for storm drainage, and then eventually they started to erode and form steeper gullies, and many of them were buried underground in storm sewer pipes. So about 65% or so of our natural stream network has been buried in as part of the storm sewer system over that very, you know, fast development, primarily in the, from the 40s to 1960s or so. So in some of these locations, these storm sewer pipes go through the backyards of homes, and that obviously makes expanding and upgrading the system very challenging. And in some locations also, there were no easements established when those pipes were installed, and there was no requirement at the time also for overland relief, which again is important for reducing flood risk. And so basically, you know, if anyone's not familiar, overland relief is just a safe pathway for water to flow when the storm system reaches capacity. It's an additional pathway for that water to flow to the stream, so that, you know, hopefully avoiding flooding buildings and businesses and things like that. So, so again, we had this, you know, fast development, no regulation, and then on top of that, we have continued urbanization and growth pressure. And then on top of that as well, potentially what we're seeing is changes in our storm patterns and increasing intensity of these storms. And so that's kind of all building up to, you know, this increase in flooding that we've been experiencing in Arlington a lot since 2017 or kind of that timeframe. Okay, so in response to this increase in flooding impacts and sort of severe storms, we have been working to expand and shift our stormwater management program to have more of a resilience focus. And there are several elements to this flood resilient Arlington program. So on our storm sewer infrastructure side, we have been trying, or looking at expanding the types of projects that we're doing and also the locations. So prior to this, we would mainly install larger sized piping, would, you know, install a secondary pipe, you know, to the existing storm sewer pipe, or we might upgrade the size of the pipe. But now we are considering doing detention vaults, or storm, stormwater pumping stations, those types of things, you know, just different types of facilities. And then also looking at more of our public land, for example, some of our parks and our schools, such as athletic fields, where we could potentially put some of this detention on those sites, you know, without affecting, you know, the use of the site, kind of the longer term use. So we have been doing increased outreach to property owners, helping them understand, you know, what they can do in terms of protecting themselves, taking steps around their property, purchasing blood insurance, just trying to communicate. We did a couple workshops in 2019, following the severe storm that, you know, I know affected the whole region in July of 2019. We are also revising our development requirements for single family homes. I'll talk about that a little bit more later in the presentation. So we are adding more requirements for more detention to the stormwater requirements that we already have. And then additionally, doing some more analytics and data assessments, which I'll also talk about again in a couple slides here. Next slide. So for Arlington, we have about five watersheds where we've seen the kind of majority of the impacts from these recent more intense kind of cloud burst type, you know, type storms. And so you can see on this map, the heat map, the pink areas, you know, where it's darker pink is where we're just having more reports of flooding and incidents of flooding issues. The yellow dots show where we do have planned stormwater improvement projects, and so those coming, that's coming out of our stormwater master plan, which was adopted in 2014. But we are, you know, trying to escalate it and kind of move those projects forward more quickly. We did put a stormwater bond on the ballot in 2020 for the first time, and that was approved by the voters for additional stormwater funding. So, next slide. Yeah, okay, the ramp. This is also a new study that again is kind of contributing to our data assessment and sort of analytics. And so what this does with our stormwater master plan, we had done a capacity study of not the entire storm sewer system, but a number of watersheds as part of the storm sewer system. So what this is doing is actually adding to that, looking more at doing a risk assessment and vulnerability assessment of those areas. And it's also adding in climate projections, which our earlier study did not include. So it's looking forward 2040, 2070, and then also updating our, if the most current rate while data, developing some more, the IDF curves that we can use, because the current curves, you know, I think had not been updated for about 20 years, so we wanted something kind of reflecting again these more recent storms. So as we mentioned here, this is trying to map more of the urban floodplains. So in addition to the FEMA floodplains, which, you know, we have those floodplain maps, and they're updated periodically by FEMA, some of those watersheds that we saw in the prior map do not have, you know, the flooding is not occurring right next to streams, but the places where people are flooding is where there used to be a stream, and then it's, you know, been buried, as I mentioned, in a storm sewer pipe. And so those are kind of the lower topography areas, but the water, you know, will still go to those locations once the system reaches capacity. So again, the ramp is underway, and that should be finishing up early next year, and so that again will be helpful. So it's developing some additional flooding maps, and then trying to look at what's in those locations and develop risk assessments and vulnerability assessments, and then helping us to do better mitigation planning for those particular areas. Next slide. So as, similar with Falls Church, we also have our MS4, our stormwater permit from the state. And so these are, you know, regulatory requirements that we need to meet in terms of our water quality, all the programs that we do to reduce pollution and improve water quality. So we did actually just receive in July our new permit. It had been delayed for several years, so it's renewed every five years, but then sometimes the renewal takes longer than you would expect. But we did receive the new version of the permit in July. And so you can see here with the red line, for the first round of the permit, the first five years, we had to meet 5% for each of these nutrient targets, and so we did meet that, and so we have exceeded that. But then for the next round, we'll need to be up to 40% by the end of FY '26. So just an update there on our stormwater permits. And we have some of our other programs that help to achieve those goals. A few projects, I just want to kind of highlight some key projects that we have coming up, some of our capital projects. So again, along the lines with flood resilient Arlington, this, at the Reed School, this area is near Westover Shopping Center, which I'm sure many of you probably frequent that area and know that it was very severely impacted by that July 2019 storm. And so some of the residents in that area came to us, and the school was under construction or was about to go to construction, I think at the time, and said, you know, is there something that you can do, you know, here to help mitigate and reduce some of the flood risk? So what we are proposing and should actually start construction in a couple months, hopefully, is a large detention vault underneath the sports fields. And so there was already a small vault that had been proposed that would have mainly treated onsite runoff, but it has been greatly expanded. The other interesting thing with this project is that there's a large 84-inch, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't tell you to advance the slide. Can you advance to the next slide? Sorry. I have another version here too. So this is again the Reed School. You can see the blue area is where the stormwater vaults will be installed under the athletic fields. And there is little red lines to show you where water will be diverted from an existing large storm sewer pipe that runs under those fields. So there's an 84-inch storm sewer line that runs beneath that, and we will divert some of that water into the vaults and then, you know, keep it there for a few hours, and then it can drain out after the peak of the storm goes by. So. Another important project we have coming up, if you want to go to the next slide, is the Formal Run Flood Channel. And this, the flood channel, if you're familiar, you may not be familiar, was built around 1980 in the lower part of Formal Run, on the border with Arlington and Alexandria. And that again was following some very significant floods in late 60s and early 70s in that area, sometimes referred to as Arle-Adria, the kind of the border between. And so there's about a two mile federal flood channel project down there, and then periodically we need to remove vegetation and sedimentation and things that built up in the channel. So that, we are doing a significant effort with that, which will be, it actually will be starting probably this fall, and take a few months in partnership with the city of Alexandria. But that is very, was a very important investment for reducing flood risk for South Arlington, and this will help to maintain the function of that and make sure that that is continuing to protect that areas. Another project that we have under construction right now is a stream restoration project along Donaldson Run. And kind of very unusual situation is that there is actually a water main that serves about 20,000 residents that runs along one of the banks of this stream. And it was discovered, you know, from the stream erosion that the water main had been exposed and was starting to be undermined. So that was a very critical infrastructure piece, obviously, that we needed to protect and make sure that it's secure. And so at one point, probably in the 50s, when the neighborhood was built, I think there were plans to bury the stream and put a road in through there, and that was when the water main was installed. So this is a fairly unusual situation. We don't have a lot of water mains next to streams. Typically, we do have a lot of streams with sanitary sewer infrastructure and sanitary sewer crossings. But you can see here in the top picture, the extensive erosion, that all happened, some of that streamback erosion there with the fence falling in, in that July 2019 storm. So this project is under construction. And again, you can see we had to restore another branch of Donaldson Run about, it's been about 15 years now, it was about 2007, and you can see the difference there in terms of elevating the stream and providing the stream with access to its floodplain area. And then also, we install step pool features that will help to kind of slow down the water and kind of manage some of the energy of the flow. So that project is under construction, should be finishing up probably in this winter or so. Another large capital project that we have is the Boston Pond Project, which will be getting under construction probably in the next month or so. And you can see in the top right picture here, Boston Pond was a dry pond that was installed to collect stormwater runoff from I-66, when I-66 was constructed. And it, and the pond has changed a lot over the years. At some points, some beavers, you know, did move in there, and then so sometimes it's referred to as a beaver pond. But this is really one of the largest opportunities for stormwater, well, for water quality treatment in Arlington. We don't have a lot of ponds, we don't have space, you know, to install a lot of large ponds. So again, this has been, contract has been awarded, and we're about to begin construction on that shortly. Next slide. You can see the final design here, and this project has been in planning for quite a while and was delayed just due to some easement issues. But, but you can see here, we will be creating a constructive wetland with kind of multiple flow channels to maximize the water quality treatment, and also we'll be adding a lot of native plants and a lot of kind of different, you'll have some deeper water, you'll have some kind of shrub wetland areas and different types of habitat. So it will be a real benefit in terms of wildlife. Currently, there's a lot of invasive plants in that area because it was not really ever, you know, fully planted at the time. So whatever's kind of grown up in there has just, has just come in, but will be totally replanted with natives. And we will also be installing two litter control devices, one at the top, you can see up at the top, kind of at the triangle at the top, and then one at the bottom of the alflo. And that again was something that was important, that came out from the engagement, public engagement in terms of managing litter more effectively. And there will be a new platform on the east side of the pond here for viewing and kind of pedestrian, some benches and some interpretive signage. Next slide. So we also are kind of continually doing green street projects, and these again, along with the stream restoration projects and projects like the Boston Pond, help us to meet those water quality regulatory requirements under our MS4 permit. So these green streets, we did a study of the entire county back in around 2011, 2010, I believe, as part of our stormwater master plan. So we did kind of an initial survey of where we have space or potential to add these rain gardens and bioretention facilities. So I think we've installed about 30 or so to date. Some of them are in the street median, like you can see these ones here is on the left along Williamsburg Boulevard. We've recently installed some on Walter Reed, around Fifth Street, the Wall Street Drive. And so often these projects, because we now have that kind of assessment and potential locations for the green streets, they can be easily combined with other projects. So if we're going in to do other sanitary sewer work or other infrastructure improvements, we can combine it. We also are doing a number of these that can combine with traffic calming, some of our neighborhood conservation projects that focus on sidewalks or traffic calming, we can add these projects in here. So you see this photo on the right, this is sort of just an open space area, which actually it was referred to as, I guess, a paper street at some point. There was maybe consideration of putting a street in here, but it was never turned into a street. So we are going to put in a small bioretention facility at the bottom of that. And then that's in conjunction with the sidewalk project that the neighborhood had requested through our neighborhood conservation. Next slide. So a little bit about the single family home requirements. So again, the county board actually several years ago had requested that we kind of reexamine the requirements for single family homes in terms of stormwater management and increase, you know, the performance of that program. So currently, there are requirements since 2014, I think, and even earlier, for any new home or large home addition to install stormwater management facilities. You can see some of those examples here, such as the impervious driveways or stormwater planters or rain gardens. But this new revision to the program will increase the requirements for detention. So the current requirements are focused more on quality improvement, but the new requirements will expand the amount of detention that the projects have to do. So they will have to detain up to three inches of rainfall onsite, and then as they release that. And again, this is in response to, you know, impacts and it's probably similar to Falls Church in Arlington County. The majority of our increase in impervious cover, you know, is coming from single family home redevelopments. So we do have a lot of coverage requirements, you know, again, similar to Falls Church, but because you're going from, you know, sometimes very small homes, you know, to larger homes, that's where we're really seeing kind of the bulk of the increase in imperviousness. So again, just some, you can go to the next slide. So this will, again, just add some detention requirements, so trying to detain more runoff and release it slowly, and try to, you know, tackle, you know, these more intense storms and reduce impacts to neighboring properties. Okay, next slide. So I did mention that, I think we were talking about it before the meeting started, Arlington is in the feasibility analysis phase of converting to a stormwater utility. We have had a stormwater fee since around 2008, but it's currently is based on the real estate assessments, or the assessed value of the property as opposed to the impervious cover. So there was an initial phase one analysis done, and then now we are looking at phase two and kind of moving in that direction, but it will likely be another year or two, you know, before we kind of fully move over to a stormwater utility. I think the majority of jurisdictions in Virginia do have a stormwater utility, but you know, we still have it based on the real estate assessment. So I know someone had sent a question earlier about the rate options, and so I believe for, and I can, I can also, after I'm done, I can send a link there to some of the more information we have on our website about this. They are looking at rate structure of kind of based on residential, flat residential, and then residential with a, based on the equivalent to ERU, the residential unit, and then also, I think, residential ERU with a tier, you know, with a cap. So they were analyzing kind of several different options for the rate structure, but there's some more information on that in the report that I can share. Okay, this is our last slide here. So, so again, we have been trying to do more outreach as well to our residents about what they can do, you know, obviously the county's working on a number of fronts to try to improve our system and reduce risk, but homeowners as well can take actions. So we have some checklist, a lot of information on our website. And unfortunately, in Arlington, we do have some homes that have driveways that go down and slope down from the street into, and so that kind of makes it very easy. So those are some of the locations where people have had difficulties, you know, with flooding. So again, just trying to give people tools. You can see some examples here. In the middle, this is a newer home, but you can see, I think, with some of the newer construction, you know, that there's a little bit more attention paid, you know, to some of these floodproofing and reducing flood risk. And we are actually looking at making initially a voluntary guide in terms of flood resilient design for properties, and then kind of with maybe the eventual, you know, down the road of plan of making some of those apartments, you know, more into actual apartments. But we will be developing initially a voluntary flood resilient design guidance. And that's all I have, I think. Here's my email, and if anybody, you know, wants to follow up on something later, but yeah, we can take a few questions. I don't know, I forget exactly how much time I had, so if, if you took most of the time, I mean.
Actually, yeah, we have plenty of time because our rest of our day just became much lighter. So, yeah, this is very timely and thank you for this. Obviously, we had some flooding last night. It woke us all up in the middle of the night. We were down for the, dropped a couple inches in like an hour, and not as bad as 2019, but you know, we have this bad in some ways, it was pretty significant. It's a very timely, and it's something that I know we've, you know, we've been focusing on here in the city for, for a number of years in different ways. Obviously, 2019 brought a lot of things to a head, just like it did in Arlington, you know, and so, and we have our stormwater fee based on impervious, but anyhow, without jumping down, let's see, I guess what we'll do this is, well, let's see, Tim has his hands up, there's some other folks that have joined us as well. So maybe we'll start with the commissioners, and then we'll move on to others who have joined us. Tim Archie, go ahead.
Sure. Thanks, Eileen, for coming to share your knowledge. I have a question regarding incentives that Arlington is offering right now to its residents. I believe there's a program called Stormwater Wise that Arlington has been offering. I'm just curious as to where that stands and what the future plans are for that type of a program.
Sure. Yeah, we did have the Stormwater Wise program for several years. With the COVID budget challenges, it was put on hold in 2020 and more recently. But I think with what we're going to likely do is with the movement to a stormwater utility, you know, there will be a requirement to have a crediting program as part of that. And so we will probably convert that program over, you know, into a crediting program for the, for the stormwater utility.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think Mr. Quintas might have.
Thank you. I think maybe Tim was kind of getting at where I was going to ask, that given, obviously it's really important work, but given the cost of housing and housing construction is out, are there ways that you can balance between driving up housing costs and still doing all of the great things that obviously we need to do here? I guess correct is one way to do it. Are there other special tools made for low income housing for people?
Well, yeah, I guess, yeah. I mean, the county does have a number of programs, you know, to support affordable housing and encourage that, I think, through a lot of our, you know, more through maybe some of our site plan projects. So, but I do know for like these proposals that we're working on with the land disturbance activity, you know, with single family home requirement. activity, you know, with single-family home requirements, we have created some templates and some tools to hopefully make things easier for the, you know, the engineers and the designers working on those projects. So that was kind of one, you know, we actually had done a survey initially, kind of at the beginning of this whole process. And what, you know, what we heard from, we surveyed contractors and builders and engineers, and we also surveyed people that lived near a home that had recently been rebuilt and kind of got their input. So the neighbors of the rebuilt properties, you know, said they need to do more, you know, for stormwater, you know, were being affected by the runoff. And then a lot of the professionals, you know, in the field were frustrated by the amount of time it was taking to, you know, get permits through and that process. So that's one thing, we're trying to address both of those concerns with these updates. So by creating, we have like now CAD templates and, you know, some zip files where people can kind of download and get a lot of the materials that's already kind of generated. So again, it's, it's actually just going into effect in a couple of weeks in terms of the requirements. So we'll be evaluating it over the first year, but hopefully we will see a reduction in those, you know, because a lot of the planned materials will be more standardized. So the review time hopefully should be faster.
Great, okay, thank you.
Ms. Wise.
Thanks for joining us this evening. That was very helpful. I'm interested to know more about the RAM project study that you learned, that you mentioned. As you noted, flood risk maps are based on historical data, but we are in a situation now where, you know, precipitation is likely to increase. So I wonder if you could tell us more about who's doing your climate risk analysis and, you know, where did the funding come from to do this?
Sure. We are working with Jacobs on that study. And so initially, the funding, I believe, came, you know, from our existing budget. We did actually have somewhat of a balance, even though we had a number of projects kind of in the pipeline. And so right now, this year, you know, with the large stormwater vaults and the stream project and the Boston Pond project, we will be kind of, you know, that's a lot of the larger capital projects for one time for us to be having all under construction. So, but I believe we are actually applying for a grant. I know my boss right now has been putting together a grant package, so we're hoping to maybe recoup some of the money for the RAM. So I can provide some more information, I think, on, I forget exactly which grant or program she was looking after, but anyway, so we'll maybe be able to get some of that back. But I think we used some of our current funds, but then we, at the time, we were also proposing the bonds, you know, so we knew they were going to be putting forward the stormwater bonds. So that was, fortunately, that was passed, you know, by the voters. And I think a lot of people realize that with the impacts from the recent storms, you know, that this is something that we have, you know, and I don't know if Falls Church is, if you've done bonds for the stormwater before. We do them a lot for schools and parks and transportation, but we have not done one for our stormwater program up to this point.
Handoff, Stephanie Hamilton.
Hi, yeah, thanks. This question may have actually been, you may have answered this already because I submitted it earlier, but was having some technical issues. So I only saw the last couple of slides of your presentation, unfortunately. But you have a slide in your presentation about regulating single-family homes, and you talked a little bit about it just a couple of minutes ago, but I'm curious what kind of sort of recalibration Arlington is doing to counter residential development's impact on stormwater. I know you mentioned, you know, you mentioned already trying to make some tools available for engineers and others working on homes, but I guess I'm just kind of asking if there was anything that I missed because I wasn't able to see most of the presentation.
Sure. Yeah, and I can, I can send you our webpage on this, you know, which has a lot more detail. And there's also a, we did an informational meeting about it back in April, and so we do have the video from that meeting. So if you, like I said, if you want to delve into, you know, more detail. But the gist of it is that, you know, we currently, and for a number of years, we've required stormwater management for new homes and for large home additions. But the focus of that stormwater management was more on the water quality side. And so, you know, we typically maybe treat up to an inch of rain, so there would be some detention, but it was scored and kind of evaluated more on the water quality benefits versus stormwater detention. So with this revision, we'll be adding more requirements for stormwater detention, you know, in addition to those water quality requirements that we've already had. So starting, you know, in a couple of weeks, it goes to effect September 13th, they will have to detain up to three inches of, you know, rain basically or runoff on the property and then slowly release it over a few hours. But so we'll likely have a tank or something else in combination with the stormwater facilities. An additional requirement is to do what's called soil profile rebuilding. So this is something, I think, coming from our forestry staff as something, you know, that they would like to see more. But often, you know, when you do that, you know, when they do that heavy construction work and the soil is really affected, and I think we actually, it was a small study that was done that showed that post-construction, the soil is, you know, is 10 times more impervious kind of than areas that haven't had that recent construction. So this basically rebuilding, you know, you're just mixing in mulch and sort of loosening the soil kind of as a final step, you know, as they exit out from the property before they do planting. So it would have two benefits. It would really help your, any new trees and plants that you put on the site, you know, to survive much better. And then it will also, you know, allow more of the water to soak into the ground. So that's another element that we'll be adding to the programs. Is that filming?
Tim Sanders back up.
Yeah, just a follow-up on the earlier question. It's interesting that you're going to be transitioning to the stormwater utility with the credit program. And I think the city here, there will be a number of us, I think, that will want to follow along, how you can do that and how you structure and design your credit program. We did ours about 19 years ago here, but, you know, very cautious because at the time people were concerned about too many people taking advantage of it. I guess it was very aggressive, was that, and rather than putting a strain on the budget, basically very little has happened, you know, since it's perceived to be very complicated, not providing much value. So as a consequence, very few people here taking advantage of it. So it'll be interesting to see how you develop your credit program and indeed how your residents respond to it.
Yeah, I think, you know, one challenge with the crediting programs is because it's an annual credit, you know, it's not maybe a one-time lump sum where you make it a larger, you know, value or a larger amount, you know, once with an incentive program versus an annual credit. But hopefully people can still see the value of, you know, that $20 or, you know, whatever the amount is every year that they can get that reduction. And then I know there often is concern about monitoring, you know, the facilities and if people are keeping, you know, the rain garden or the impervious pavers or whatever, you know, in good function. But we do actually have a whole system set up for, because of our prior requirements for single-family homes to have stormwater management facilities, we have online forms that people have to basically assert, you know, and send in pictures and documents that their facility is still, you know, there and still functioning and in good condition. So it's possible that we could use some of those same tools, you know, for the crediting program if we want to have people, you know, self-certify, you know, periodically to make sure, you know, that if you want to do that every year to confirm that they still have the rain garden or they still have, you know, rain barrel or whatever that you've provided the credit for. So fortunately, we do have some of those tools already set up.
Okay, see, hand up, Dave Gustafson.
Yeah, hi, I'm Dave Gustafson, member of the Falls Church Stormwater Task Force. And to join with, thank you very much for your great presentation. I was emailing you yesterday about four mile around here. I appreciate all the how responsive you are and the resources that you have online. It's a huge help for us. One thing I'm curious about, I know in our Department of Public Works, there's been some discussion in recent months about some regional efforts to study the, basically the 10-year storm standards for the region and which standards we want to abide by. And I know there was a RAM Corporation study that took thousands of them to raise an attention and experience if you have any thoughts on that and whether Arlington is looking at adopting newer standards or give any other problem for the regional picture for that.
Sure, yeah, I don't know all the details. I mean, I do, I think I do remember seeing something from Norm L. with NBRC about kind of those, you know, efforts, you know, to revisit, you know, some of that information and make, you know, potential changes there. But I don't know, unfortunately, I didn't have time that day to kind of dive in and read more of the details. But I think for us, you know, we will be looking at when our, when this RAM study is completed, you know, again, if we need to make, you know, changes or, you know, kind of updates to our design, you know, standards, everything like that. So we'll be, you know, that was part of the reason why I think we undertook that, again, looking at the climate projections and updated rainfall information to see if we need to make adjustments. So, you know, hopefully that should be, again, in a few months, you know, we'll have some more information from that. And we will be, we haven't done a lot of communication about that as of yet, but we will be, I think, over the next six months, communicating out some more of the results and kind of information from that studies.
I'm interested, just, you know, your title is intriguing to me, you operate on a different scale, you know, as a Falls Church credit test, more communication manager. And where does your position fit in typically stormwaters and engineers? You may not know your background, you may be an engineer, but, you know, and I'm just curious, you know, what your background is and what your position is, you know, is your task for doing?
Yeah, so our bureau is, you know, a little bit smaller. We're called the Office of Sustainability and Environmental Management. And so initially, we were more stormwater, kind of focused on the water quality and kind of the stormwater permit requirements. And then a lot of our stormwater infrastructure was handled with a different group, in our public works group, and they had, you know, staff down there. And then about, probably about 10 years ago, they did bring one of their planners up and kind of, you know, merged in with our team. So, you know, I usually do help with the outreach and engagement for capital projects. And then obviously for the stormwater, for the permit, we have kind of mandatory, you know, education and outreach requirements that we need to do under that. So that's something that I manage that and have another person that works with me. So we do, you know, outreach on all different sorts of things, you know, for homeowners and businesses and, you know, fat soil and grease and, you know, salt and all this, you know, pollution prevention kind of tips. So I started more in that realm, but then when we brought in this other team that, you know, looked at more of the infrastructure planning. So now we actually support, you know, both of those teams on, you know, in terms of their capital projects and any outreach needs. And so obviously, you know, with the flooding and some of this floodplain map updates and things, you know, there's a lot of outreach and communication that has to go along with that. So kind of depending on what each group needs, you know, we'll work with them and then the program managers and project managers to kind of plan out what they need to do. So my background is, I have a science degree, so it's kind of geology, environmental science, and then I did more groundwater for a master's degree at UVA. So, but I've always, I've always enjoyed writing and sort of the communication piece. So I think that's something that works well for me is kind of, you know, understanding the science, but then trying to be able to articulate it in a way, because some of this stuff gets very technical and there's a lot of jargon and it just gets very confusing for people.
Yeah, that's so important in stormwater because I think people, you know, when they're affected by it, I mean, right, it's easy to get lost in, you know, the two-year storm, the 10-year storm, out of the regulatory framework and just having, you know, I think here at Falls Church, I know certainly that there's books that were focused on it, I think after the 2019 storm, we formed the task force. I think that was maybe a turning point to try to, you know, make it more transparent and, you know, get people involved and, you know, because, right, it's easy to get lost and, you know, heard the engineers speak of, well, they met the two-year storm, they met the 10-year storm, everything's fine, but that's not the whole story. So, yeah, I know that type of function that you just described, I think, is very important. Let's see, Stephanie Hamilton.
Yeah, this is actually a question for the planning commission. There's a reference in Eileen's presentation to mapping the county's urban floodplains outside these floodplains. And I was curious if that's something that Falls Church is doing or is maybe kind of looking at, Jerry?
Well, I mean, that's, I don't know if we've done that in the same way. I mean, I think, you know, we have folks here from the Stormwater Task Force, and I know they've, you know, after the 2019 flood, and I know there were worked up before that, we certainly have looked at, for example, you know, properties in the city that are particularly vulnerable to, you know, to flooding, you know, at the floodplain. But also, you know, after that, after the 2019 event, I know we mapped out, you know, I think that's a funny, that was part of the agip somewhere, that, you know, where there was damage, where people reported, you know, requested bulk garbage pickup after the 2019 floods, to map out problem spots that are not in the regulatory flood. I think we found that a lot of the, you know, a lot of problem spots in the city are not in the traditional 100-year FEMA flood zone. And I think a lot of, and I know we have folks here that probably speak to that more. I think a lot of the first round of projects that the city is looking at doing that came out of the task force, it was a direct result of that. And so I don't know, Dave Gustafson, maybe he can comment more on that part of it, what you guys did on the task force, but I think he looked at everything, not just the original flood.
Sure. I would actually throw that to Hans Miller, our vice chair. That's part of our presentation tonight.
Yeah, so this is Hans Miller. I have a slide to talk to that, that shows that he nothing just referenced. And, you know, it's interesting actually that a lot of the places where there was damage was actually those places outside the flood zone. And I think part of it is that, and you referenced in your briefing, that there are things like fences, you know, some people had built fences that blocked the flow and they didn't realize that actually there's a tributary going under their yard. And so when it flooded, it went over their yard. And so all they did is by backed up the flow and that created pressure that went into basements and caused damage. And, and so a lot of the flooding damage actually occurred in places where people were not in a technically FEMA flood zone, but they had done things that you wouldn't do in a flood zone because of the lack of awareness. And so general guides and, you know, the basic philosophies that you brought up in your brief, that definitely apply. And so a lot of our focus was actually outside the flood zone.
All right, I don't see any other hands up. I don't expect to, and I apologize if I'm like missing the full scope of the agenda. Did you actually have a presentation as well?
I do. I can share my screen if you want. I can bring that up or if you have it on your tab, I can do that. But I added some slides to ours to show you some of the actual mapping that we did as part of one of our projects, just an example if you'd like.
Sure. No, yeah, Eileen, do you have that all set up?
Yeah, so I have the presentation, but if you've added slides, feel free to share your screen and then I'll share mine again after your presentation.
Yeah, for some reason, it's not coming up. So why don't you go ahead and just go to the tab and I'll just talk to, I'll talk to the other slides.
All right, I'll go ahead and sign off, so, but we have a good, have a good rest of your meeting.
Thank you, Eileen.
The slides I have, the slides I have were what was presented to the Falls Church City Council by Ralph Anderson and that we put together. So first, thanks very much for the opportunity. We did have support from White Shields, Zach Radley, Andre Prince, and Ashley Dudley for, Tony Dudley for their support and helping to inform some of this. So what the Stormwater Task Force was for those one-awares, a group of citizens, we got together by request or interview with the city council at the end of 19 after driven by the floods that happened in July of 19. We did most of our work beginning of 20 to prioritize six projects. And then we brought, came back together to look at another four, but we had a different lens that I'll talk to as we went through that. But as we went through this, we realized that stormwater is so much more than just looking at specific projects and it's really much, you need to look at it at a more strategic lens. So that's what we tried to do with this presentation, to put that together. And a couple of takeaways, I think, that would be good for the planning commission. One is that there's really value and awareness of this because we think there might be opportunities as we do developments. So as we do developments, it might be opportunities to create, capture, Paul mentioned this to me in one of the large projects like Founders Row, they did actual capture tanks below there. Or if we're already tearing up the street anyway, we might be able to replace some of our. we might be able to replace some of our old pipes. We have some pipes that are up to 80 to 100 years old. So if we have places where we're doing development, maybe we can do that, you know, um, as, as a additional at lower cost since we're already doing, uh, the major construction. Uh, like to your takeaway in terms of just some more guiding philosophy and strategy, uh, that helps. And it was reinforced, you saw in the Arlington breach, you went to, in some very good detail on why, um, which leads into some of the drivers, uh, on where it comes to the stormwater. And the last part is, um, one of the reasons we had some challenges with stormwater, I think, is we stagnated for about eight years. We had a watershed management plan that came out in 2012. And then until the 2019 storm, there was nothing done. There was still increase of the fee and there was no, uh, active engagement, uh, with systems on, on stormwater. And so when that happened from 19, those eight years, we're almost froze, uh, with very small changes, um, your, your effective ability to improve your stormwater, uh, didn't, didn't happen. And so what we've gotten to a point of, when we started the stormwater fee in 2012, we had the ability to cover projects. Now we barely have the ability to cover maintenance. And, and so we're having to borrow money to do projects. And so, uh, the last part I can talk to is some of the stormwater fee memo and other things we did for the council. But here we'll just kind of, the intent is just kind of present some of the general philosophies and drivers. And I think a lot of it echoes what, what you heard from Arlington, but we put it around a slightly different wrapper. Um, so if we go to the next slide. Um, so when we look at the guiding objectives, the big thing to think about is it's, it's really overall system. And when we look at, the intent of looking at objectives is it's really much more than these individual isolated projects. Um, it's, it's, it's really about multiple things looked at and it's, it's, it's from a lens of both projects, uh, community, individual involvement, you should point out the previous period, and policy. Uh, so there's policy maybe in individual homeowners, maybe there's policy business development, um, or there's policy in terms of trying to help improve things like flow or, or capture. Um, increasing green infrastructure. We'll talk to why green infrastructure in a second. Downstream drainage is as the water flows through the watershed, how do I make sure it's not getting into 90-degree angles or things that increase the flow or where, places where you can actually have a, a narrow pipe that backs up the flow. And, and then the really important part is about the watershed. And so if we have something near the top of a hill, um, but we changed something that was a, a, uh, surface area that was pervious and changed it to impervious, especially at the top of a watershed, uh, that just accelerates and, and, and sheds the flow downhill. And that's where we really get problems. It's, she saw that in her brief, but it's about flow, not just volume, but it's about rate. Uh, so when, when water is accelerated, that's where we start seeing really the damage. Um, and so it's project policy and community activity. Next slide. So the green infrastructure was a, a focus area in this second round of the Stormwater Task Force. And what we're trying to do there is, this is places where there might be opportunities alongside any, um, development we do. But it's places where we can have natural capture of water, um, uh, either to capture it or to slow the, uh, slow it down. So, you know, having, having trees that can absorb some water, having catch basins, uh, all of those, all of those help. Sometimes it's green lighting, like this previously gray infrastructure or, or pipes. Um, uh, there's, there are trade-offs with that. And, uh, so, you know, there is a balance. Um, sometimes you have to look at, uh, what the maintenance is involved because we need to be green infrastructure. There is maintenance, additional maintenance, uh, involved in that. But the end, I think the goal is, is intent to try to, try to reduce and, and treat some stormwater challenges at its source. And, and to give multiple areas of this and work together as a system that helps reduce the flow. But you also have, um, from an urban and community interest, the green infrastructure obviously helps, I think, from a community, uh, perspective in terms of visible, uh, benefits as well. Uh, and finally, it also helps promote in terms of capturing and reducing pollutants, well flowing downstream, which as you saw before, we have a requirement to do, uh, things like Chesapeake Bay requirements. Okay, next slide please. So this is a, on, on this slide, uh, the takeaway here, she talked about the five different, uh, broad ops with watersheds for Arlington, and we really have two. Um, it's Trips Run and it's Four Mile Run. So two-thirds of our water flows into Trips Run and one-third flows into Four Mile Run. And then you have the tributaries that feed that. So obviously we're getting water coming in from surrounding communities, but then there's also the law, uh, how we handle the flow, uh, within Falls Church. Um, and here's the heat map that you referenced. And so this was based on solid waste, solid waste pickups from the flood event, but it did a pretty good job in giving us a sense of where, um, there was flooding and where, where, um, that watershed was pushing water or where there was backup. And so a lot of the, the red areas, uh, was often caused by some backup. And so the city used that to help inform the projects that they looked at, and they asked us to prioritize it in, in 2020. Um, so we were handed a list of projects that was based on this and based on citizen input. And, uh, and then we looked at different criteria to try to prioritize those projects. Um, one, one kind of bumper sticker on this slide though is, it is very important, and she hit on this in her brief about impervious area. Um, so as we look at, uh, changes in this, and as you saw from the presentation, uh, a lot of the, uh, growth in, in single-family homes, when they increase from these smaller homes that were the past and significant increases in the impervious area, um, as an aggregate that really impacts, uh, our, our ability from an overall stormwater. You can build all the pipes you want, but if we just be, build a lot of that impervious area, the water's going to flow, uh, and, and backup, and we're not going to handle it by, uh, pipes and green infrastructure alone. So we have next slide please. So this is a summary of the phase one projects, and this is kind of just a step back. I, I wasn't planning to go through all these. Dave can, can talk to specifics on any of these if you want to. Uh, again, fundamentally, what we did when we looked at these was we looked at, um, the fir-, in the first round, we really looked at the criteria of severity. Where are we going to have the biggest impact? And one of the things we looked at is how many acres of land are feeding into this area? And, um, and so we looked at, for example, the Trammell Branch, there's quite a bit of area above is feeding in that is causing some regular flooding from a, um, uh, you know, just against that 10-year standard. So we mentioned there's a 10-year standard and, um, there's a, there's a table you can mention, which fundamentally is just tied to the amount of rain over a, a certain period, whether it's three hours, 12 hours, 24 hours. Um, and so 10-year doesn't mean it happens every 10 years. We're seeing that probably more like a couple of times a year for five to 10-year floods, unfortunately. And so, but, but that's basically a standard that we're trying to look at. So we were trying to say somehow stormwater's going to solve, uh, things like the July 19, uh, July 19 flood. Um, ultimately, these, these projects in, in 2020 were really things to get after deficiencies in the drainage aspect. And sometimes it was a matter of changing the angle. Sometimes a matter of widening the pipes, replacing pipes, um, and just basically moving the water away from the city to the creeks. Um, but the intent was now, as we move forward, looking at green infrastructure to also slow the flow. So if we go to the next slide. So we looked at the phase two, which was our next round that we did this past year. We took those severity, uh, criteria that we had, uh, but we also brought in easement and, uh, right-of-way. What was the, what are the challenges involved with construction? So as we try to do this, what other challenges do we have? And is it even feasible to do? Are we utilizing green infrastructure? Um, what are the royalty, what, what impacts we have water quality? And then a big one we looked at was funding opportunities. Are there ways that we can get up? And, um, we'll, we'll see. And then I'll, because that was, that was it for that one. If you go to the next slide, please. So we focused on, um, four, four main projects that we had some recommendations. And again, we're looking at green infrastructure and, and the flow. And I have a map on the next page that kind of highlights where these are and why we're looking at these. So if you go to the next slide. So, uh, I think there's an error on the picture in the very top left, but you can see where these, uh, these areas are. And so what we're trying to do on the city hall campus, this was a look at showing where you can do, uh, green water improvements, uh, green infrastructure improvements. Um, and that's at the top of the watershed. Greening Lincoln Avenue is showing where we can do a planning project, but also include, uh, stormwater attributes in terms of when you put some of the tree or capture basins along with that project, that can help in the traffic calming, but it also helps from a stormwater perspective. On the Oak near Broad and Virginia and Pennsylvania, those are areas where there was, um, increased flooding that can feed right into Trips Run. So in a broader goal of how do I slow the activity going into the watershed, uh, is, is really, um, the focus of those areas. Uh, just to highlight, um, on the Oaks Deep and Broad, the impervious surface area in that area is at 89%. So really water flowing there just, just flows right down. And, um, so there's an opportunity to create some green technologies, uh, promulgators, pavers and box filters and bio retention measures. Um, in the city wall, hall campus, it's a large drain area at the top of the watershed. And so there have been some improvements here already based on 2012 plan. But it basically is going to allow us to encompass and, and showcase some additional green infrastructure improvements that will hopefully capture water at, uh, at the source at the top of the stormwater, the watershed. And then West Broad and Virginia and Pennsylvania, this is another place where we have very high impervious area at 91%. And so you really get some excess water flows and high velocity. And so the intent is to try to really focus on street flooding. So one of our criteria was also looking at, at safety and where we can reduce street flooding that can cause, uh, hazards and, and problems for the city. Go to the next, next slide. So overall, we had multiple recommendations for the, uh, city council. And, and so we recommended that, you know, for the city council to adopt a, a very broad, you know, these broad strategic areas so that we can look at policy and, uh, individual homeowner efforts as well as, uh, projects to invest in. G I on this slide stands for green infrastructure. Um, and one of the things I just wanted to highlight there is, is to look at, um, where we might be able to do green infrastructure through other investments. And what we meant there was, uh, the, any, any parallels or opportunities that might come along when we look at, um, planning developments or other development projects and, and see where there might be opportunities, uh, where we might be able to, at relatively low cost, be able to include a stormwater, uh, activity, um, to hopefully improve the overall quality of our stormwater watershed. The next slide. So here's another way to look at Falls Church from, you know, where we are in the watershed and how things flow. But you can see, uh, how it all, how, how things will flow into Trips Run and, and Four Mile Run based on what the elevation map here of the city. Um, and so ultimately, it's, it's all a system that we're all part of. And so I think there's, sometimes we have planning developments that can, um, you know, increase, uh, impervious area that we want to be aware of. But I think, uh, emphasis item, I think, is that there are opportunities. And so if we stay engaged with opportunities, um, that can be a way to relatively effectively or efficiently, um, address, uh, stormwater. Um, and just one final point is we, uh, two memos we were asked to do for the city council that we're going to present, uh, on the 13th of September. Um, one of them dealt with some recommendations of stormwater fee. And, and that was looking at different types of things to complement or enhance, uh, add to the fund. And why we need to look at how we do improvements to that or updates to that. Um, and the other one dealt with the advisory board. And, and so the intent is that there's a kind of standing advisory board, uh, that you can reach out to and hopefully be able to engage with on, on projects as they come up. And they may be able to advise on where, where we might be able to get the best bang for the buck, uh, in terms of improving stormwater in addition to other things. So, uh, thank you very much for, um, for your, uh, for your time and the opportunity to kind of present some of the things we looked at. Um, there's a lot that went into this, um, that we have a lot of discussions and, and maps and studies that we talked to with different engineers. But this is basically a summary, I think, that would, for the main takeaways that I thought would be of value to you. Um, so that as I hand it off to Dave, if you had any other comments to add.
Sure. Thank you, Hans. Um, I'll just provide a little bit of added context and we're happy to take any questions and, and discuss some of this further. Um, since the Stormwater Task Force numbers have been paying close attention to this issue for the last, the last two years.
And so you were presenting to the city council. Did you have to present right quickly? Sorry. I was, I'm sorry, it wasn't you. I said, I was printing as I was talking.
And, as we've been paying closer attention to this, uh, the last couple of years, uh, there's, there's been a huge, uh, interest both from the, from the public numbers, the public and the city as well as, um, sorry, I'm singing in the background here as well, so nobody's free from it. Uh, as, as from the, the Stormwater Task Force's perspective, we would just like to be able to set up residents and business owners to have the best, uh, chance of success in terms of, uh, keeping water out of their homes and businesses. And, uh, from what we've seen, there's, from what points of concern making, uh, stormwater is a system, but our system was not built with sort of holistic, uh, thinking in mind. So in, in Trammell Branch, for example, we have, um, the pipes flow backwards. Sometimes the Four Mile Run gets surcharged. Uh, we've seen some areas in the city that not handle a two-year storm, uh, well, well, the 200-year storm like we had with the July 2019 flood. Um, we know that, uh, I, I have a lot of, uh, a lot of, you know, friends in most places, I like to call them around the city that I hear from every night, that there's a, um, a flood watch or a flood warning. And just last week, we had seven days in a row of flood watches this morning. Uh, they made it two weeks ago. It's kind of like they just keep up. Uh, but summer storm season is, uh, is very frightening for a lot of residents and business owners across the city. And, uh, given of the, the age of the city, its age and our infrastructure, given our small size, we have sort of an added degree of difficulty in terms of tackling some of these issues. So we were just asked if, um, as much as possible, the planning commission can continue to keep, uh, keep its eye on stormwater and look at projects through a stormwater lens, uh, as you're, uh, as you're considering new projects going forward. We've seen great progress in the city since July 2019. Uh, as of last, uh, last fall, when the financial picture for the city was, was quite dire, uh, we've been very grateful that the city council, um, continued to make stormwater a priority. And they put $400,000 towards, uh, continuing the engineering on the six major, uh, priority projects in addition to, uh, hiring two stormwater project managers. We're fortunate to have one of them here with us tonight, Tony Dudley. Uh, he has been fantastic for working with us and we'd be eager to get some things done. He's already, uh, got one Trammell Branch pipe in the ground and he is, uh, eager to get, get moving on some of the other projects. So lately we've seen with, um, the ARCA funds that have become available, the stormwater projects have been, um, some of the easiest to, uh, agree on that they should be, uh, that they are eligible for something. And we know that, uh, the, the council and, and staff has been, uh, trying to figure out the way to accomplish some of these projects without, um, you know, taking on additional debt if possible, or just taking on a minimum amount of debt. And so a lot of what we heard from Arlington tonight was, uh, it's, uh, it's nice to hear, you know, the real love company and it's nice to hear that a lot of the, uh, the approaches that Stormwater Task Force and staff has been considering have been, are under consideration and are very safe to development, uh, by our, our, our other neighbors. And, and another thing that's, that's a challenge is, given that the, it, 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 given that a lot of neighborhoods in the city are not, um, served to the 10-year storm standards, we would like to see that established in sort of baseline level of service that a resident or business owner could expect, uh, in their area. Um, like, like we, we've seen in the last two years, there are some parts of the city with new developments that don't have any stormwater infrastructure that was required when, uh, new homes went up, uh, which then leads to the city to have to kind of pick up pieces and add that infrastructure if it's not required. Um, and let's see, uh, and, and a couple of the points is that a lot of, the points is that a lot of stormwater can quickly lead to public health and safety issues. So with older neighborhoods where stormwater can reach into sanitary sewers and some sanitary sewer backups, that has caused staff infections among residents in the city. We saw in Maryland today, sadly, there was an apartment building that was flooded that went to women and their staff. And so in addition to our street flooding as well, it was a matter of public safety on variety of fronts. And Mr. Dudley tonight also mentioned that unless they're considering using their athletic fields for a retention facility, that was something that one of the stormwater task force members had brought up, with the possibility of using the Oak Street school athletic field for being able to handle some of the rain. Some of the excess runoff in the trips run watershed. So there is information about that at the end of our memo that was presented at the April twelve city council meeting. And then I would also just encourage everyone to consider the fact that in the twenty-five watershed management plan, I believe we were over forty percent impervious surface in the city. And that's a nine-year-old metric. So I'm sure we're much higher than that right now. We know the economic forces are driving towards more and more commercial land and, you know, family development. We're just ask all interested stakeholders in the city to please take a closer look at improving the requirements. And we've been grateful for the commercial developments that have happened recently and some of the concessions that have been made to add increased capacity to some of the, the parents of green infrastructure. So we've made great strides in recent years, but we have a long way to go, and we have a lot of catching on to do. That is all I have.
Thank you. That's, I mean, listen, we certainly, we appreciate the work that the task force, and I followed it closely, I'm sure many of the other commissioners did as well. And so, you know, I was very interested to see how that group came along. And I was pleased to see the other projects that came out of that. I know the council strongly supports, you know, the work of the task force and implementation, more importantly, of the projects that have been recommended. And I know, you know, as you mentioned, for us, obviously, whenever we have the opportunity, I don't think it's a stretch, you know, for the commissioner, but I think whenever we have an opportunity, you know, to improve a situation, obviously, all the properties that are redeveloping and mixed-use projects are typically taking, you know, like the Blackford Downers Row, which is nearing completion. I mean, that was a site that, you know, was largely impervious before they started there. With no modern stormwater controls. And I know, like on that project, there aren't many of the others, we're always cognizant of that. That's, yes, you missed as far as I said.
Thank you very much for joining us tonight and for sharing this presentation. This has been, you know, a presentation that I think we've been waiting for for quite some time, actually. We've been wanting to hear, I know that the city council sort of prayed at this group when you report to city council, but, you know, I don't think you have to do a lot of persuading of this planning commission to fully embrace that stormwater really touches everything that we do. I mean, when we think about climate change, right, Falls Church City is going to be impacted by increased precipitation and by heat. And the role of the planning commission is really long-term planning on land use at the city. I mean, from the comprehensive plan to zoning, to reviewing specific projects, to our recommendations on the C I P, there's not a single piece of what we do where stormwater and climate resilience shouldn't filter through. So it's really terrific to hear from you, and specifically to hear the work on green infrastructure. I don't know if this filtered through to you, because I know everybody's a volunteer, and they only have so much time to do, you know, our volunteer work and pay attention to everything else. But one of, the planning commission's recommendations on this, two city councils on this C I P last year, was that we think twice before approving additional gray infrastructure stormwater projects until we have a green infrastructure plan as well. Because I think one of the other benefits of green infrastructure is that it could be a real cost benefit, or a real benefit economically to green infrastructure projects, right? So, you know, you can't do green infrastructure alone, but it's not just climate and, you know, environmental health benefits, there's an economic benefit to them as well. So we wanted to see more green infrastructure. Our other concern with investing in stormwater at this point in time, sorry, I want to be very clear, we fully support investing in stormwater projects. So the way I'm saying, I don't want to misconstrue the way I'm saying this, but, you know, concerns with investing in gray infrastructure, one, we need a green infrastructure plan. Two, we also need a much better understanding of the climate risks and then increased precipitation. And it's hard to predict the future, right? But we do need, you know, we need to do our own scenario assessment of flood risk in the city so that when we invest in infrastructure or buildings that will have a thirty to fifty year useful life, that we are doing some future proofing of that infrastructure. So rest assured, we fully embrace your mandate and are, you know, very happy to hear this presentation. I wanted to ask a couple of questions about your future, because here, you know, we, I agree completely, we've made progress, but we have so much more work to do. The planning commission has had on our work plan to consider climate resilience. We haven't gotten to that for staff capacity reasons and other reasons. There's been this little pandemic thing, that's sort of Stormwater Engine thing, but that, you know, that's something that we need to work on as a city. But I do think you'll be very valuable to have the stormwater task force continue as a body, and I think I heard you recommending that. For one, you know, the planning commission, planning staff has now implemented a process, which I think is very helpful, where new developments, when they're proposed, we bring other boards and commissions in early for feedback. And I think having a specific stormwater lens will be essential. I do think we need some more explicit policies and procedures and resources around stormwater planning. So just a couple of questions I have for you guys, you know, stop, yeah, hurry, are, one, you know, I just want to be clear, is it, were you asking for city council to sort of continue this, because I would support that? Two, when you think about implementation, you know, I think one of the things I'd like to see more work on is resources. You know, we need resources for a climate risk study. I suspect we may need more staff resources, I don't know, but I'm sure they could use more help on this. You know, are there resources, regional resources that we could be availing ourselves to, you know, develop a plan and support implementation? So what you, what you continue is the next logical step for you, maybe thinking about kind of an implementation plan for the city. That was the last, but thank you for your time, I really appreciate it.
Yes, Dave, I can take the first one. I have some talking points based on what we're going to talk to the city council about, and I know we can have. But to answer your question, yes. So one of the things we were asked by the city council was that question and what we, what we'd recommend. And so our baseline recommendation is some permanent advisory board be established with staggered two-year terms. It wouldn't necessarily be the same group, because we've been doing this for almost two years. So I think there's folks who are like ready to hand it off. But whether it's, we had a lot of debate about whether it's a commission or advisory board. And so we leave that up to the council. I think most of us were thinking it's more of an advisory board with the intent that there's regular engagement with other, other commissions. And some of the key functions would be input on, on the stormwater fee and stormwater fund and how we, how we manage that. And that might include, you know, things like ideas for, you know, how do we look at other things, not just the stormwater fee. Input on other proposals for revenue streams, reviewing stormwater project priorities, but also reevaluate annually to assess as new project come in, you know, not just be locked into what was previously done, but, you know, is there a reassessment of the priorities? Monitor those project implementations, and then providing feedback on stormwater policies and changes to city code. So I talked about each of those major areas. I think you have a slide that's assigned to you or aligned to where we have our code. And I think one of the things that Harlington brought up was the idea that you have, you know, when you build a new house, you can't regulate the size of it, but you can have maybe some mandatory retention requirements as that new house goes up. Because that was one of the things I asked city council, and I was told that we can't do anything to say, you know, it's locked into certain square footage, but we can have potentially some of those. And the last thing was reviewing and working with large development projects to, you know, look at impacts, but also opportunities for stormwater. So those are really kind of the key, kind of the key things we had for that one. And I think when you talked about resources, when we looked at the priorities, that was one of the big things we looked at. So we had a lot of discussion, and Anthony Dudley and some of the other members of the staff were very helpful in talking about federal and criteria for different kind of external funding options. And a lot of that, I think, and that might be a function of the advisory board, is to look ahead and the staff is looking at that. But those have some tight timelines and criteria. So sometimes it's about shaping the projects so we can align with those and be competitive for those external revenue options. And we did also look at revenue stream. So we did look at things like, can we have a graded plan? So we, right now, the more core footage you have that impacts your impervious area, the higher stormwater utility fee you play. But we also looked at, but as you get more and more, should that rate actually increase proportionally? Or is there a way that as you do a much bigger change in your impervious area, if you do a sudden increase of a significant amount, is there a step function or a tiered structure that, that has even more of a fee? And we looked at like, you know, can we look at that in terms of permit fees if you have a significant increase in impervious area? The, just for awareness, the finding on the graded structure was that we couldn't do it, and that was more about how they do billing. It would cost more to process than it would in terms of revenue collective. But I think I really liked from the Harlington presentation about maybe there's just building that into the code in terms of as you build a house, there are things you have to do in terms of to offset your impact of the stormwater. But those are, those are the things I have in terms of your resources questions. Dave, do you have anything to add?
Just a couple things. One, in terms of, do we need more staff? Yes. We've, we've had quite a bit of turnover in D C W in recent years. We're, we're happy that Tony's here, and we've been sticking around for a long time, and we're excited that there's going to be an additional stormwater project manager who's hired. Tony could speak better to kind of the traditional labor within D C W, but we've lost Alan Melton, like the medical owner of the city who's a stormwater task force person. We, Robert Goff has since retired, and we have a few D C W directors. So there's been quite a bit of turnover. And so we want to make sure that there is, you know, that we have the adequate staff in place that if we can, you know, give a better understanding of what our using speeds are within our small area and to be able to work toward a drastic move. And to your point about the green and gray infrastructure, we've seen that we need more of both, to be honest. And no one is as, you know, green infrastructure, certainly, it feels, it feels more exciting and futuristic to click in place, but if a lot of it is not, it helps a lot with water quality and quantity to a lesser extent. But you need both because we've seen, because we don't have the same luxury that newer developments have, where they can have large retention ponds near parking lots and things like that. We have to work within the boundaries of the city that we have. And unless we have, unless we adequately serve our residents and business owners, then homes and businesses become a de facto retention for, for the city. So we would like to see a baseline understanding of what the, you know, the minimum drainage service that home businesses can, can expect from, from the city. And we also want everyone to understand that, you know, we, you know, everyone's laid apart in there, no matter where you are in the watershed. It may affect some people more than others who are low in the watershed. But it's impervious services, larger homes, redevelopment, a lot of that, and all of it contributes to the issue. And so we need to be looking throughout the city, not just in our D A's, not just the redevelopment areas. So it's been interesting to see what some of the resources and incentives that Harley Timmons is putting in place, Alexandria has a new program that's put in place. And I think communication plays a large role in that. And we were fortunate to have a great communication staff in the city. And we obviously spent more effort communicating about stormwater issues, including those, and especially when we start talking about dollars, that matters. We need to do more to help residents and businesses understand the stormwater credit and make it as less routine to be able to apply for those. And we're also fortunate that they've done a great job in terms of encouraging the, you know, in terms of adding green barrels. So every little bit helps. But we also need to have some baseline standards for, for the gray infrastructure specifically.
Okay. Now that was a great, great, great answer. I want to echo what Ms. Weiss said. I mean, I think, you know, now that the task force has kind of completed their first round, I mean, I really feel like it's letting them become a standing committee group, because the problem is so, as you said, so multifaceted, there's so much more to do, there's really small-scale things, you know, from rain barrels all the way up to, you know, much larger things. So it's such, it's such an important issue for the city. And it's something that honestly, you know, it doesn't affect everybody. It's close to home, I mean, right, whether you're, I mean, you know, wherever you are in the watershed, it seems to be happening more and more. And so that's the climate side of it, which Ms. Weiss mentioned. And so, yeah, it's just, you know, it's hard to overstate how important it is. And I know it certainly, you know, pervades all the work we do, whether it's a small subdivision we're reviewing, or it's a large, larger development, and anything in between, and our long-range money, we're coming, we're constantly confronted with, with that side of it. You know, and the ideas that aren't, it's great to see what Harlington is doing. And there are some things that I think to me are interesting as far as bringing in, you know, looking at increasing the requirements for detention. I mean, that's, that's a real thing that could really, you know, have tangible benefits with the cost to builders. And there's always going to be that balancing act. But it'd really be interesting to see how they look at that with the building community and their reactions to that. Was there a pushback on their side from having to spend more money on larger detention, you know, systems or not? But, but yeah, there's, there's a lot of that that we can continue to work on. So with that, let's see, again, you know, and so, and so, you know, it was a conversation that we will continue to have, and perhaps we'll have an opportunity again to have the task force back, and it continues to function and we'll want to do, look at other projects and other things, because there's a lot more to do. But, you know, our doors are always open, and the task force ever feels that the planning commission can assist in any way. You know where to find us, and we're happy to partner, you know, with you and anybody possible to, to work towards the safety goals without a doubt. So again, thank you very much for your time, your service to the city, and your time tonight. Thanks for the opportunity to meet you and tell you about what we've been doing. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know if we planned this, we planned this with Paul, my new, you know, if you like a hurricane coming up the coast, we'd be dealing with like flood watches. You know, yesterday, I don't know like the weather, I'm a little weather nerd, I don't know who knows that. So when I was looking at like the weather map yesterday, there were like flash flood watches from like, you know, Tennessee to like Boston. And I was thinking, wow, interesting, we're talking about plating tomorrow night, because there's going to be- because there's going to be some flooding in the Northeast and the Middle Land at that time. So, but anyway, so very timely. All right, moving right along. Oh yeah, can't forget it. Just in case, just raise more hand petitions that you receive for things not on the agenda.
Uh, no, we received none.
Okay, just checking. At some point, you may get that, but may be a whole, it would be the first again. Yeah. Okay, so then it takes action items. First thing, the minutes for August 4th. Were there any comments, corrections, edits from anybody on August 4th minutes? Okay, but if not, then the promotion to adopt those minutes? Anyone on the August 4th minutes?
I move to approve the planning commission minutes of August 4th.
Thank you, Ms. Weiss. Do you guys, you have a second? Second, Mr. Stevens. Any discussion or if not, no call but please.
Asher Rosner?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens? Mr. Puntaz?
I'm staying.
Ms. Weiss?
Yes.
Ms. Colmont?
Yes.
Mr. Hira?
Yes, sorry for being a little late.
Oh, no worries. Thank you.
All right, the minutes are approved. Okay, that takes us to the next item, which we briefly hit on. I forgot if it was the August 4th meeting or before that, but the issue of our liaison assignments, which we have a new member. So I think, see, we have a staff report. Is the staff actually going to present or should we just kind of discuss it?
Um, you will.
Not much to discuss.
Yeah, I think it's pretty self intertwined.
It's interesting. Just, just that doing a habit of this. So, okay, well, I mean, obviously, you know, looking at the assignments, clearly Mr. Rankin is no longer serving the liaison to those groups. So I think we talked briefly whenever it was, whenever we had was when we first talked about this, about, you know, where Mr. Hira might want to go and, or serve and anybody else perhaps wanted to change. So I'll kind of open the floor. I mean, I'm kind of fine where I am. So I don't personally have any, you know, any desire to mix it up at this point in time. So as far as jumping into Mr. Rankin's spots that he was, he was swimming on. So does anybody else have any, Mr. Stevens, your hand, so.
Yeah, it's solicited as Mr. Rankin under the Economic Development Council. I've actually been attending those two with the last couple of years, but it's, it's not those that two people could very unofficially be part of that. So that was an opportunity there.
Well, that's a good point. Yeah, and I think, right, yeah. And I, I think that's just an archetype of everybody who certainly could go as much of that more than just doing. That's, you know, you know, to those meetings. And so, and I agree, that one is, it's important. And if one person can't make it, having a second person, you know, pretty much guarantees that they'll mostly be a planning commissioner who's following what's going on at the UDC. Since, you know, they oftentimes are getting a preview or early glimpse of things that are coming down, down the bike, the development or there's many other things that they want to. So, so again, I think so. I don't know if anyone else on the commission, you know, if we, we have competition, I guess we have to go by security. But if there's anyone else who's interested in serving on that as opposed to where they are now, or if not, you know, Mr. Hira could, you know, jump into that spot. You know, at least for the rest of, you know, a few more months of this year and reevaluate, I guess, you know, at the reorganization in 2022. But is there anyone, you know, I guess maybe that, maybe that's the way to do this for looking at Mr. Rankin's spot. So for the economic development, anyone who's interested in doing that as opposed to where they are now for the rest of the year? Or is everyone okay with Mr. Hira doing it? And Mr. Hira, if you're okay with, with becoming a liaison to that group, given where they be?
Yeah, I'd be happy to serve as the liaison to the Economic Development Council with Mr. Stevens. So we get to hang together a little bit, that'd be great.
Okay, excellent. Good. And was there any other, I guess I was, I guess, I thought Mr. Rankin was doing something else. He did not, I know the Library of Construction Movement, Mr. Wadisco was on. I think since the library's almost done, is that group even still meeting? And do we need representation on that group? I don't know if we need that. They're ad hoc and I don't know how often they're, they're meeting, especially since the project's almost done. I guess that could be still in construction. But does anyone know anything more about that? I just don't know much about the current state of that group.
We have not been meeting with the, the water stuff, as you have the water trustees. So far I can report back on those. A lot of such stuff was living there and during the task force, but I suspect they'll have to go back and look for addresses.
Okay, that makes sense. That's, that's logical. Ms. Weiss, go ahead.
Sorry, my, I'm struggling with my mouth and it's, it's resisting. I tend to unheave myself, so sorry for the delay. I just wanted to say that on the Arts and Humanities Council, a 9:30 AM meeting is close to a fight. It's very hard for me to do. So I would, you know, offer that to anybody else on the planning commission who's interested and able to join. Otherwise, I'm happy to stay on, but it's just not an easy time.
Understood, yeah. The day time meeting depending on, I think, obviously, perhaps the virtual world maybe somebody's here for coverage, but that won't always be that way. Yeah, I don't know. It happens. They typically meet every month, but they possibly they don't meet. I don't know, I don't know their schedule, but like.
I, I think they meet every month.
Yeah, yeah, I know they're supposed to.
I get the emails.
I mean, and honestly, I think we all do our best to be, you know, I always, I think we have different views on this. I mean, my view is obviously it's important, it's the work of the planning commission. Because what we do is so holistic and, you know, it's everything we do, you know, percolates through other parts of the city, you know. But, you know, I always feel like it's, you know, we all make a big commitment to serve. We're having twice a month on this group. And, you know, obviously, you know, I feel like everyone should do their, make their best effort to, you know, follow the work of these other groups and go to the meetings and attend them as much as you can. But, you know, I feel like if there are times where people aren't able to, you know, you know, you're a liaison, you're, you're not a member. So it's not like they're relying on you to, you know, for the meeting. It's good to stay in touch with what they're doing. And if you're getting agendas and reading for the materials, sometimes, you know, if you can't make a meeting one month or two, I feel like, I do have it, that's probably fine. You know, which strives deep to go, but unless things get in the way and we're all busy and with our own, so. So I guess I've got to throw up that task force for anybody else that wants to, you know, we want to trade with Ms. Weiss. And, you know, honestly, we don't have to decide tonight. We are going to, it's September. We're going to have this discussion again, you know, in a few months for 2022. And, you know, we traditionally have it. And that's the one we would make, you know, changes and mix things up. So, so again, no one else is, you know, kind of eager to jump over to a Wednesday 9:30 timeframe for that group. Maybe we'll have to talk about that, you know, at the end of the year and see, you know, what, what the options are. But, you know, we'll do the best we can. So, yeah, that was the idea. That's all Mr. Rankin was on. And I think maybe, you know, Mr. Hira, that's probably a good start. The Economic Development Council is pretty busy and their agendas are usually pretty busy. And so, you know, that's probably a good, good place to start, you know, as far as, you know, being a liaison. So that sounds good. So, all right, well, I think if that's, if we have to vote, if that's, so there's action items. We actually have to vote on that or can we just say that's what we want?
That's, that's all that you have to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, good, that's all right. Okay, great. So that takes care of that. Let's go back to my agenda. Okay, so again, that takes us out of some action items to the director's report. And we have Miss Aubrey here to present that. So I'll throw it over to you, Ms. Aubrey. Oh, sorry, I think it's been over my commission business. You know, I don't have the general kind of, it depends on the screen. So before we go to Ms. Aubrey, with any planning commissioner having reports, August is not just one month, so we'll have a lot of reports. But, you know, Mr. Stevens, if you have anything to suggest, go ahead.
I do. Speaking of the Economic Development Committee, I did attend their most recent meeting on August 26. And just thought I'd share briefly some of the discussion that they had. City basically grappling with the need to loosen up on its restrictions on the type of retail that can go into commercial development, particularly our mixed use projects. And in the past, it's been trying to limit it to those types of retail organizations that sell things. And not so much on the service side. But as, as we all know, if you pay much attention to what's happening with retail these days, that that's pretty much because of the Amazon situation. That's the service retail is, it's really the only area that seems to be thriving and growing. And so not surprisingly, that's where developers want to, to have more flexibility. So things such as convenience stores, nail salons, and those types of service retail entities are the ones that increasingly entities are seeking permission from. So I think City Council is realizing that they will need to be more flexible in that regard. And a project like the North Cape of Washington is kind of pointed as an example of a more successful model for the kind of retail that is more successful with the, with the mix of kind of service oriented retail establishments that they have there. And I also just wanted to mention very briefly a couple of things that are coming in our direction, I believe, and maybe Ms. Aubrey could expand on this. But one is the One City Center application. It's, right now, it's tentatively scheduled for September 27th as a work session of City Council. And there would also be sometime in October, a community walking tour. Actually, that might be of interest to some of us as well. And the other is that Founders Row Two. And the tentative scheduled for that was September 13th for a work session of City Council and perhaps September 27th for a first rated store. Sorry to mention those items.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Yeah, I appreciate that, those updates. Anybody else? August does tend to be somewhat quiet. Okay, not that, I will now throw it over to Ms. Aubrey to give us the director's report.
Thank you. David, we commissioners, it's been a while since I've been here, feels like. So first thing is the Virginia Municipal League submission of our public art policy. And Ms. Bazemore actually led that effort in actually public, getting that policy adopted as well as submitting this nomination. The application form is attached for interest. And then there is a submitted video. And I think, so if you guys want to look at it. And then Emily, I don't know if you have anything you want to add? Or if, do you, do you know when they are going to decide on a nomination?
I don't know when they're going to decide, but I do know that if we win, I think it's either October 4th or 5th is when we would go for like the luncheon, I think, in Leesburg. But yeah, they haven't said when they'll, they'll announce the winners.
And then, second thing is the East End Small Area Plan. We're continuing to work on that. And there is going to be a stakeholder meeting on September 15th, basically the landowners in that area. And then a community kickoff meeting sometime in October, November. The date still be decided on that. Next item is that staff had a planning advance on July 21st. And that was our first one we've had since partially returning back to the city hall. So the notes from that are included as part of this report. And if anybody has any questions, just let me know. It was productive meeting, kind of talked about the benefits of the rainbow work and also the challenges of it. And then how to provide, how to improve our customer service, especially in these virtual times. And then kind of looking forward to the future, what we want to achieve as that department. And then the last thing is the Founding Row mural. There's a couple of pictures in there that show it as being complete. And it looks pretty good, I think. It's beside the movie theater side facing our avenue and the church property. So that was it for the director's report.
Great, thank you, Ms. Aubrey. And yes, that stakeholder, I think we all got to be down Friday as to the state stakeholder. And I don't know if I responded yet, but I tried to go. I think I could, my day and I can go to that. But I don't, Mr. Stevens, I think you already responded, you couldn't make it.
Well, that's okay. It's the, one of the situations of being retired is to be able to get more time.
Right, right. Well, it's good, you know, I think it's been, I'm planning to give us more representation at those types of meetings. We don't need everybody there, but it's good to have some folks who can, who can go. So I'm going to try to go myself. Okay, and let's see, moving right along. This just takes us to the work session items corresponded to get a scorecard from the Library project, for the lead scorecard, which shows that they met their targets. I don't know who they, nobody chose. And we also then had a, I don't know, we were talking about a bill on the One City Center project that's going to be council from that War Street Commission, I guess. Folks can read through that, well, we'll dig into that deeper, I guess, later this fall. And that's all we have on the agenda. Unless anyone has any question or comments on those, these couple items there.
Yeah, I did want to comment.
Sure.
If you want to look that up real quick, for the library. You can see that they're kind of homing in on the 50 points, which is the lead silver, which is mine. But that last item on the left-hand side under energy and atmosphere, it says green power and carbon offsets, two points. That, that kind of got my attention, so it's asking some questions. Apparently what the project team has decided, I think, along with the library commission, is to, is to pursue an off-site carbon offset. So in other words, rather than putting a facility on the building, like it could be your electric vehicle charging station or something like that, they determined that that would be, in their opinion, too expensive. So the product, I believe, does allow purchase, on-time purchase of a off-site offset. So that's what they did. So I thought that was important, that some of us be aware of that. It's, it's not desirable. I mean, certainly in terms of stormwater, I believe the city has progressed to the point where we would not allow the developer to seek an off-site credit to meet their stormwater requirement, rather than they would have to meet it with onsite mitigation. So here's a situation where I think because the lead allows it. So it's a complex situation that would kind of perhaps might not get as much attention as we would otherwise like to see it have. So, you know, I think this is just a problem, the problems with the lead program. And a lot of jurisdictions are starting to, I don't want to say move away from the lead, but they certainly are enhancing it with their own requirements. Arlington County's been doing this for, for over a decade now with their bonus density program. And other jurisdictions like Fairfax County and so forth are doing the same thing, where they're going beyond just the lead because of its limitations. So I appreciate Paul having posted the, the scorecard on our agenda. And I just wanted to, to just make, you know, to just make, you know, make mention of that one item.
That's a good observation, Mr. Stevens, that I think, you know, the world of rebuilding has evolved so quickly, but even since this project, you know, began, I mean, I, you're right, things are changing quickly and there are other, other ways to measure, you know, rebuilding that's, you know, not always, right, even though it was tied to the lead. So, but yeah, that's, that's a good, those are all good, good observations. Okay, anyone else has anything to add? What we could have the, the cause for this meeting, otherwise, our next meeting is on the, this is the?
15th.
There we go, it's up there for me. Our next meeting is on the 15th. So we will, yeah, I guess I'll, I'll get with Paul on the latest on the agenda for that and see what's in to do, so.
Yeah, right now we don't have anything, in the early, or ready, ready.
So, so we may not have that. All right, well, I haven't talked to Paul in a couple of weeks because I was on vacation, maybe took some time, so we kind of, we haven't had our normal weekly phone calls, but I may chat with him tomorrow, so I guess thanks, and then it turns out we don't have anything, that may be, that may be a night off, I guess we'll see how it goes. Okay, well, unless there's any parting words, I'll officially call this meeting of the planning commission adjourned. Goodnight, everybody.